Well, I'll call to order the joint council meeting between the city of East Grand Forks and city of Grand Forks on Tuesday, Wednesday, January 4th, 2023 at 5:01. If you want to call for Grand Forks.
Sounds good. I will call Grand Forks' role. Weigel.
Here.
Osowski.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Lunskey.
Here.
Cavani.
Here.
Vean. All right, we've got five.
I'll call for East Grand Forks' better.
Here.
Patravinski.
Here.
Riappel.
Here.
Helms.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Okay, just missing one.
Here.
Yeah. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say thanks for everyone for taking this time out of your schedules to attend here tonight. We really do appreciate it. Hopefully, we can answer some of the questions and we can have a productive meeting here and see what we need to do for the next steps. So I'll introduce, we do have Ken Holtie here at the meeting tonight. He's appearing via Zoom. He is the principal for the SRF group, the ones that put together the proposal for doing this study for us. So I'll just get started with, kind of briefly go through what was put together in the study and what we're looking at for contracting with SRF. So the proposal has five phases as far as the overall project getting from where we are right now to where we would have finally construction of the potential of Maryfield Bridge or in the intercity bridge here as well. So in the proposal there, it states that there is the desire by both cities to pursue the two river crossings, which was what was decided back in July, or talked about in July. So the first being a primary interest, the intercity bridge, which currently looks at either Elks or 32nd, and then the more of the called the bypass bridge, the Maryfield Bridge. So the first part of that is the scoping phase, which is what was being proposed for with this particular contract. And the goal of the scoping phase is to bring the owner agencies and regulatory agencies together to define the requirements necessary to achieve their regulatory approvals. So the outcome of this phase would be a well-defined scope, schedule, and budget to initiate the environmental review process and technical, excuse me, technical analysis. Additionally, this phase would outline the known funding opportunities available to be pursued. So once that would be done, then the next phase, which would be outside the scope of this contract, we would have to decide how we'd be moving forward with that, would be going to the planning and environmental linkages study phase. And the goal of that would be to define the purpose and the need for each location and to begin alternative development slash screening. Then the phase after that would be the NEPA phase, and that would be the phase where a preferred alternative would need to be identified as far as a potential location or defining a location. So with that, that's what was before us tonight is what the scoping of the SRF proposal and what that would do for us. So with that, I guess I will turn it over to Mr. Holtie, and he can just briefly give us a little bit of a overview of what they would do for that and how they would go about that. As if you will see in the attachment B, they do have the different phases broken down and also a timeline at the end, which is attachment C, which would need to be adjusted because we were already past the point where we were going to start. So with that, Mr. Holtie, if you could just give us a brief overview?
Certainly. Thank you for inviting me tonight, and hopefully I would, or hopefully I can clarify any questions. I'm open to discussing whatever parts we need to have here and give some clarity. I think where I'll start with a little bit is just a little bit on process before I dive in, because I think that's an important piece of what's been a piece of the discussion here. Understanding that both communities have a desire for a bridge and an independent location, there's nothing wrong with that. But it also kind of creates a little bit of wrinkle in process and something that we need to address quite specifically. And the earlier we do it, the better for both communities, because I think there's, there is the grander opportunity to pursue both locations. Now, some people may not, may not quite grasp that. There is a component of the environmental process here that will require these two bridges to be compared against one another in the standpoint of their liability and the purposes that they serve, the needs that they will serve, and the benefits that they will provide to the overall transportation system, not just a localized benefit, but the overall system. And I think in doing some of our research, you know, these, these two bridge locations have been in the long-range plans for quite some time. And we believe that the way they, there's some of the previous work that's been done counts for them being acknowledged in these other studies. So that's a positive for us in the grand scheme of things. We think we can build on that going forward. But the environmental process is very regimented. It has changed and evolved very much over the last, oh, 15 to 20 years. And even in the last five to seven, you've seen a number of very specific changes with respect to what's required, timelines in which things need to be accomplished, and the manner in which particularly the federal regulatory agencies, whether it be FHWA or, in this case, the U.S. Corps of Engineers, where they will step in, and they don't necessarily give approvals, but there are specific concurrents points, that's a very technical term, by which they will say, yes, we agree with the process to this point. And it helps to eliminate backtracking, which is what used to happen, say, 15 or 20 years ago, quite a bit. If someone, if a player changed at the agency or some other information was introduced, or somebody just kind of had a change of heart, it really created a lot of reciprocal and redundant work, very circular, and it was very problematic. But by using these concurrents points to our advantage, we can kind of set things in place and set them in stone and build and move forward. So that's what a lot of our proposal is based on, is to try to use these concurrents points and build off of the process in and of itself to make sure that we're getting what each community is looking for and to be able to address that for and with each of the two communities. I'd also like to maybe just piggyback on that with the, with the standpoint. And even though the both communities have got, I'll say, their own independent preferences, again, that's just fine. It will be to the benefit of both communities to be working on this in a unified manner. As we sit down at the table, particularly with the federal agencies, but also the DOTs, that they see the two communities working in unison, being supportive of the approaches and how and why's and wheres of what we're analyzing and what the results that we're agreeing upon and hoping to apply. That will be very, very critical, not only as we sit at the table with these agencies to see that unison, but also as we look at funding opportunities and applying for federal fundings and other funding opportunities. That can go a very long ways in helping to put a lot of this in play. Some of that's a little further down the line, some of the other steps, as Mr. Murphy indicated. So with that, I'll get off my soapbox there. But let me come back to the scope of work that's before you here this evening. So we did put together an eight-step process, a task process, I guess I'll say. And it's, it's fairly simple in its approach, it's meant to be, but it's also meant to be really kind of a unifying approach to bringing the two communities together, but also starting to really engage the, the agencies, both DOTs particularly, but also then at the federal level. We're assuming that at some point in time, some federal dollars will become involved here. And the more the merrier, quite frankly, there, as far as getting federal monies. We want to pursue that very diligently. But with that comes certain criteria as well. And so we want to make sure that we, we present that and target those dollars and get those agencies on board right from the get-go to start with. So with respect to, so David, if I may, would you like me to just to go through each task, kind of, and talk about these briefly?
Yeah, if you keep it fairly briefly, sure. That would, I think, that'd be very beneficial.
Okay, I'll, I'll do my best here. So the first task is really about project management. And again, this is about bringing the two cities together, not that you don't meet already, right? But really starting to define a project management team, a unified group of people that can report back to your councils, and also use those, that same group of people to go out and meet with the agencies and start to build that connectivity and the, and the conversation that we want to have with each of these, these agencies going forward here. The second task is really about understanding what some of the existing previous studies have done. Perhaps the biggest feature here that we want to get into is getting into what I, what I mentioned earlier about trying to show that the two bridges, the two locations have, and this, again, this is a very specific term, have independent utility from one another. That's a NEPA requirement. That's something we'll have to document and prove through analysis. A lot of that comes from the travel demand, demand models and some of the other traffic work. That is, that's not the sole issue, but that's a lot of leaning on the, on the models through the MPOs. So that's really what the largest part of task two is to try to get at, that independent utility, to understand how each of these two bridges, these two locations specifically, can work independently, provide independent benefit from one another, and be proactive and work together in unison within the transportation system as a whole. The, the third task is really then starting to reach out and, and meet with you, the, the agencies. We believe that we should reach out to the DOTs very specifically, and again, talk to them about, here's our approach. We've got two locations. Here's how we like to tackle this. Here's what the models are telling us. Here's what we, here's how we think we can approach this. We want to do a Pell study. Get them on board with that. The DOTs very often operate as the direct leads onto the FHWA. You as a city, as, as an agency, will have access to them, but they tend to be pretty, federal agencies tend to be pretty, what do I want to say, kind of, not critical, that's the wrong word. They tend to be pretty, picky is the right word, about how they have some of those interactions and which agencies are sending them information, who's coordinating them, coordinating with them. So for example, us as a consultant agency, we, you know, they'll, we'll be able to set up meetings and that. A lot of times, the exchange of information will want to come through the DOTs. So getting the two DOTs on board with our project, our process, and what we want to do for your two communities is going to be important. And then once we have that, then we'll reach out to the FHWA, bring them on board. And then also, a next step would be to bring in the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. We could potentially do the FHWA and the Corps together, but they are two independent agencies. They will have their own set of requirements. We're trying to make sure we're picking their brain to ask the right questions, to make sure that we're driving at, giving them the right answers to get their approvals to go forward into the next steps here. The fifth task is really about just kind of developing the outline of the Pell study. So based on the information we get from the DOTs, federal highway, and the Corps of Engineers, is, you know, what they want to see, what they want to hear, the specific issues that they may have, want to make sure it's covered, the whole element of independent utility, how we would address that to their satisfaction, et cetera. This will help us define then how we look into these next steps. The Pell study is newer. This is one of these changes I talked about in the last five years or so. And it's really meant to kind of help take a range of alternatives, a lot of stuff you pour into the top of the funnel and helps you bring it down. And ultimately, at the end of NEPA, a single preferred build alternative comes out. But it's somewhere in the middle of that funnel, we could take a lot of those alternatives that we pour on the top, and we can, and riddle that down to a manageable size that would get more specific scrutiny going forward into the NEPA process. And the reason we want to do that is, another change, is that the NEPA process has a very specific timeline associated with it, based on the type of document that you're going to do. If we end up doing an EIS, that's the, that's the high-end, high-order, that could take many years to do. If we can get it down to something more simple, like an environmental assessment, we might be able to crank that out in 12 or 18 months. And so the ability to define the right process, that's why we want to meet with these agencies to gather their comfort level with that. There's also certain criteria we need to meet. But that would be a good way for us to then map out how we get into the Pell study and even looking forward into the NEPA study. The, part six goes right with five, not only just defining the outline and the things we need to do, the tasks we need to handle, but what's that schedule? How's it going to lay out? We'll be looking at meetings and coordinating with these agencies too, about these target points, these concurrents points I mentioned earlier. We want to set those out front so we know when we get to, you know, the end of the month, the spring, summer session, whatever it might be, we're going to be looking at getting their approvals, getting them on board. They can be queued up in advance and be paying attention. A lot of times, the agencies, they want to be involved, depending on what their, their time restrictions or constraints can be, that can be a challenge. And so the more we can do to plan ahead, get in front of them, get out on their calendars in advance, that can play to our advantage a great deal going forward. The, the final two components of, of the proposal that you have in front of you, really the number seven, is to then to take that, that schedule and that scope and really start to develop some professional hours. Do we need to have some other subconsultants? Do we need to have some geotechnical done? If there's any special other critical features that need to be brought into the mix to help define that and to give you a, a planning level study, more than a planning level study, but a number to work for. And really, what number eight is all about then is finding the monies to pay for those steps, five, six, and seven. So one of the things we want to do early is to start looking at funding opportunities, not only just for construction. We can start looking for those kinds of dollars right away. But there are a lot of planning monies, particularly at the federal level that are out now with the infrastructure buildings there, that we'd like to get, try and try and get lined up so that some of these future steps, we can get those funded as well, too, as, as complete as we can get. So the ability to start to look at what these funding sources are, and again, there's certain restrictions there with respect to how federal monies could be applied or how they could be used on certain tasks. But if we look at these and kind of divvy them up, I think there's some opportunities for us to take advantage of that going forward into the next, the next couple of phases here. So that's probably the quick and dirty of it there.
Great. Thank you. So I guess at this point, depending what our council presidents might want to move forward with us, I guess we would take any questions or answer anything that the councils might have. I do see that we have, I'd say, the majority of the individuals that were on the consultant selection committee are here. So we should be able to answer, hopefully, anything that you might be able to ask.
I have one quick question that I, I think the group probably has tucked away. For our consultant, for the work that you will be doing, or if we go ahead with that work that we are proposing, suppose the bridge was not built for, let's say, one of the two of these wasn't built for 10 years or 12. What percentage of the work that you've done toward that bridge would still be relevant beyond a one, two, five-year timeframe? What would still be relevant in that 10-ish year timeframe of the work that you're proposing to do?
Of the work that we're proposing to do now, if, if one of these locations did not get, say, built, well, okay, here's, here's the thing, built for 10 years, if the process continues and doesn't, say, suffer a stoppage somewhere, it probably will last. And so the, that's the beauty of the concurrents points. Once they're, once you kind of get to those points and you get, those agencies say, yes, we agree with, let's just say, the purpose and need, that can be done. As long as the, the project continues to evolve, and doesn't mean you have to be going full blazes, but as long as there's, there's movement and there's momentum, that can, that can be, can carry forward. One of the things we want to be very careful about is that if there are, it would be a, a kind of a stoppage of work or delay, and you can kind of massage that a little bit, is, is in the traffic work and the modeling. The agencies, the federal agencies tend to be pretty particular about how old that data can be to still be considered valid. So that would be one area where if we can, if we can get into the early modeling and make some of these early determinations, and again, kind of keep things moving forward, that will carry forward and that will go. But it would say you get five years down the road, and for whatever reason, there's a, there's a year kind of pause, there is the potential that that traffic work could, could end up being redone. They typically don't like to read, to pick up something, if you will, when the traffic counts and the modeling work is more than about three years old.
I guess, in my view, this is a, going to be a continuous conversation. I don't see that it's ever going to get kicked to the side. Which of these is the higher priority is still to be determined. And of course, the rate at which we can get things done is yet to be determined. But I don't see that this ever goes into mothballs for one, two, or three years and just sits there. I don't anticipate that.
And I would agree with that. I think with what we've seen, the interest I've seen as I've watched some of your meetings, there's a huge desire here. The potential for funding is really at its peak, as high as it's been in a very long time. There's, there's some really good opportunities in front of us now, yes.
Thank you.
Well, I suppose we can open up the conversation. I just had one quick question, and maybe one of the city administrators can answer this. Where are the, the counties? Have they kind of taken a pause to wait to see where the cities end up on this? I know it was on the agenda for the county commission in Grand Forks, at least. Where did that end up for the funding for the study?
Mayor Bochensky and the joint committee. I think when I talked to, followed up with the county, I said, why don't pause until we work some of our issues out. And so I think they're, they're ready to engage on Maryfield. But I said, we were going to have this joint meeting here in the new year, and once we work through our, we would expect them to then reengage on that Maryfield. And, and it's not only reengage and want to move forward in, in, in good faith, but also to help with the cost share of this too. And so it's one to say, say you want to be part of the team, but I think it's important for them to have some funding involved in this to have some reality. If I could ask the consultant, Ken, one question.
Please.
You've mentioned two locations. When you mentioned two locations, you mean the Maryfield Road and then the, we'll call it the intercity neighborhood bridge? Are those the two locations you speak of?
Yes, that's correct. That's a great clarification.
One of the challenges we have, Ken, is we still have debates on the intercity regarding, we'll say, Elks Drive and 32nd, and maybe there's some, some alternatives. That's where some of our challenges have come with the intercity bridge location discussions. Do you have any advice for, for our group regarding that specific issue and how to, how to move forward regarding that concern that we have? I think we probably have a majority that would go ahead with Elks Drive, but 32nd Avenue, we have some challenges with.
And it can include a hockey shootout.
Well, that'd be fun. So, advice, well, I should, I should avoid advice, but, okay, let's, let's do this. There are benefits to both locations, and there are desires at both locations of the intercity location, okay? I've seen that, I get that, and this is the work that's been done to date, that's pretty clear. And yet, there hasn't been enough of a definitive moment that says, aha, that's the one, right? So that's the trick. That's what makes these hard. In this particular, in the intercity location, to go back and do, I would say, a little deeper dive with the traffic modeling and understanding some of the traffic movement is going to be a big piece of this. I think public outreach is going to be a big piece of trying to decide how that is. I do think there's a component here where, how we show its independent utility from the Maryfield location could also play in that, because one, those locations are only separated by, you know, I don't know, a couple hundred feet, quarter mile, something like that. One way or the other, might be just enough of a swing to show that independent utility between the two, as well as showing benefit to the existing bridges to the north. There may be a trigger there that has not quite been found yet. The modeling for river crossings is incredibly nuanced and very particular. And so we'll want to work with the folks that have your model, and we've got experience with some of that. But it's, it's more than just plugging in the numbers. Here's a location, let the model run, and it spits out some new volumes. There are dials, you kind of play the Wizard of Oz there a little bit, too, to show what, what reality is as best as we can model it. It's not a perfect science, certainly, but, but the federal agencies will rely on that heavily. So I think, as well as then, I think, I'm sorry, I'm kind of rambling. I don't mean to. I think potentially, a discussion with the Corps could come into play there, too. If they have any particular input as to a location might mean something with respect to their, their facilities, that they're trying to preserve and maintain, et cetera. There might be something there that we could take advantage of to help make a determination as well. That would be my, my initial thoughts here.
So Ken, if I, if I may interject for just one second, is, I'm going to go back to when we were doing the interviews with the, with the selection committee, and maybe you could expand on, on that a little bit. Is that maybe why you were saying, I remember you said in the, in that interview process, something along the lines where the feds, sometimes it's a detriment to the, to the feds or to these agencies when you come in with a, saying, this is the location and this is the only location we're going to consider?
Right, exactly. So this is, and so this is what we have to be very careful of. Obviously, you've had some work done before. But the reality is, that work constitutes basically what in the, in the process, and then there, I could, there's a schedule from the interview, I could pull it up if you want to see. But that's really kind of in the planning end, the corridor, some of these, the MPO worked through that. It's kind of a long-range plan, and I know you, you did some independent work there. But the, the federal highway administration particularly will not allow what they call a predetermined solution. And to say that, hey, we did this study, this is where the bridge is going to go, let's go get started on an environmental document, that's just not going to fly. Because of the steps that are required through NEPA, and so, for example, the very first concurrents point is this purpose and need to, to establish that purpose of the bridge, the need that it serves, and to get the federal highway administration to accept that and basically put their stamp of approval on it to build forward. So we will need to revisit that, and that means looking at some alternatives, which will mean revisiting some work that has already been done. It's not a great process. Most agencies don't like it. But it is what the federal government requires if you're going to spend their money. And so as, as efficiently and effectively as we can get to that, that's the trick that we want to try and, try and push towards. Because I've heard a few people here say, hey, we've got these studies, let's go, let's go build them. That would be awesome. Unfortunately, it just doesn't work that way.
So, Ken, I guess I got a question, you know, on the, on the Grand Forks side, I think we're, you know, picking a location, whether there's a location at all in the inner city is going to be the, the question here. It seems if we move forward and we want federal funding, they're going to make that decision for us. And that kind of leaves that out of the, the city council's hand, because obviously, there's political aspects to this, too. And I think that's going to be somewhat concerning to the, at least the, the Grand Forks side, as we go forward, if we haven't really figured out where our preferred location is politically.
So, so when you say they will make the decision for us, are you referring to federal highway?
Well, yeah. I mean, you're saying federal funding, they don't want a predetermined location. So we move forward and, and, you know, go down the path here, they're going to say, this is the, the, the bridge we'll fund, and we, we aren't going to fund the other one. So, you know, without that funding, we're not going to be able to move forward, let's just say, if that's not the bridge that we want.
Well, if that, yeah, okay, let me, let me try to rephrase.
Maybe I'm getting ahead of myself, but yeah, give me some more insight on that.
Yeah, so maybe I, so to be clear there, so, so when I say they, they won't accept a predetermined solution, so for example, the Maryfield Study, you've done a study there, there's a location that's been identified, which is great. That's, that's proof of concept at this level, mainly because of its age. So in order to move into the new federal process, NEPA, we'll need to update a lot of that, traffic work, et cetera. And by, by doing that, we'll need to look at a range of alternatives, other locations, multiple locations, and compare them against each other to determine where is the best location. You know, so what is the best location? Well, there certainly are the traffic operation and the, and the transportation system benefits that comes into play, but there's, there's social and economic and environmental impacts that also come into the plan. Are you impacting more wetlands? Are you adversely affecting a lot of residential properties or even agricultural properties? That can be an economic component. So those pieces all come into play, and so you really end up creating a, a matrix of evaluation criteria, which is one of the things we want to engage the federal agencies in. What's important to you to understand how we decide where the best location, where the, yeah, where the best location is, so that they'll have buy-in and acceptance when we, when we run through the numbers, when we build out the table, and we say, hey, this one looks like we've got a winner here. Are you on board with us? And that, that has proven to be effective over the years. Did that help?
Yeah, I think you pretty much summarized what I was thinking. Yeah, thanks.
I could use some clarity on, on that still. There's a, it feels to me that there's a tension between what you said earlier about the need for our two cities, counties, states to agree, to, to come with an agreed-upon proposal. And the tension between that and what I'm hearing, that the, the feds and the NEPA study would tell us what, what locations would be funded.
Okay, so let me, let me maybe try and reword that a little bit.
Thanks.
Don't, I don't think the NEPA study will tell us, how to say, that will, the NEPA study and the feds will not tell us which location is acceptable. The process will, and the feds will approve the process. So if we have a, a number of river crossings, and I'll use, let's go back to the intercity one, right? We got Elks and, and 32nd. use, let's go back to the inner city one, right? We've got Elks and, and 32nd. If we wanted, the, the hope would be we could just narrow in on those two and do a deeper dive and just compare those two. If we can get the feds to agree to that, then the process of evaluation of the traffic and the social and economic and environmental, public outreach, you know, political input, that's certainly part of this, that will basically fill out an evaluation matrix that we will use to help make a decision. And the feds will, again, have hopefully bought into those criteria, will watch us develop it and will, and will agree that this, this is the, we will make a recommendation, you know, we, the cities, us as a team will say, this is the one that we believe is the most acceptable, most prudent, et cetera, et cetera. And the feds will go, yeah, we agree with you because we've been on board the whole time. That's the, that's what we're shooting for.
Okay. If I could back out from that for a moment, you mentioned a little bit ago that this is an historically unique opportunity, that there's a greater opportunity for funding, and that's for roads, for bridges. Is it for both new bridges and repairing old bridges? Or is there preference for maintaining and repairing old bridges? How much opportunity is there for, for new bridges like this right now?
There is opportunity for both. And I think one of the bigger opportunities is that historically, the federal money has been for construction or rehabilitation, as you've suggested. Now what is available is the monies for the planning work, the environmental work, the, the design. Design was often included before too, but it was more like you, you've already been through the environmental process. You knew what you had. You knew what you wanted to build, and it was about getting it designed and getting it built, and that's what you were looking for. The biggest opportu, so there are plenty of monies to everything you described, and there's more of it. But there's also the additional bucket now of planning monies that we can use to your benefit as well.
And in this planning process, with the preliminary planning that we've done, one of the factors that I've been hearing about is a positive cost benefit ratio. If we're looking at federal funds, it's my understanding that that is an essential factor, that they're not going to fund something that does not have a positive cost benefit ratio. Can you speak to that?
Certainly the better the cost benefit is, that'd be awesome. There again, that's a very specific process and the way they like to have those developed. And now will they fund something that's less than a, a B C of one? They can, if that's been determined to be the best alternative overall, and they've agreed on the process and the manner in which you've determined that. So it's, it's not unheard of, I don't believe. But certainly if we can get that benefit cost over one, it's kind of a no brainer then too. They're, they're on board.
This ratio is an important factor, but it's only one of many factors in the equation.
That is correct. Yes.
Thanks.
I'm sure you've picked up when you talk about the nuance of, of traffic study. And one thing that came out of the earlier study, what, what drove the benefit cost ratio over one for 32nd and under one for Elks was that 32nd would pick up a little more of the bypass traffic. It would act a little bit more like a collector and less like a neighborhood connection. Well, well, that's favorable in the benefit cost analysis. It's unfavorable for what we're really trying to accomplish with that bridge. So the, the factor that makes Elks less than 1.0 on benefit cost is a factor that makes it more desirable in my book. I don't want to funnel traffic through these neighborhoods from outside. I want it to be as much as possible, just connecting the neighborhoods. And so if there is a way to get over that hurdle of benefit cost for Elks, that to me would make it even more favorable as now you can get it funded.
So, so the one thing I would offer caution on is that we, at least on our end, have not really dove into how the, the current benefit cost numbers have been derived. As I mentioned earlier, when it comes to the river crossings and the approaches that the Federal Highway Administration likes to apply, that's a very particular approach and application. I don't know that the, the B C ratios you've got right now have been developed to that detail.
That's great.
A little bit of caution there.
Perfect.
On leaning on those two heavily at this point in time.
That leaves hope that maybe Elks can climb over one.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yep.
And Elks would also offer perhaps a, a stronger contrast in utility value with, with the Maryfield Bridge.
Right. See, so, so this is the little nuance that might have been kind of noodling on myself here. It feels like the, the inner city location is going to provide that, that local access. You don't want a lot of through traffic. You don't want the, the, the truck traffic that's going through town now, right? I mean, there's schools in the area, you've got residential neighborhoods, right? So there's that benefit that, that draws there. Whereas the Maryfield is more the bypass and there's some of that trucking. You would prefer that to be there. So again, if we could kind of show these independent utilities and show these benefits that both bridges offer positives to the transportation system as a whole, not just a localized benefit, but the grander scheme of things, that's going to play in the long run for, for both locations.
Ken, we have heard on, on the Grand Fork side, can you talk with the intercity bridge, the neighborhood bridge, is that, how can we engage the federal government? We've been kind of told, well, that's a local issue. You know, there may be federal funds, maybe state funds, but that's more of a local decision. We'll, we'll play more part and parcel with Maryfield because it's on our interstate system. So there's more of a DOT federal highway. If we move forward this inner city.
Talk to us about the federal and state funds that can come even to a local bridge. How do we, how do we sell that so that we get a really significant cost share from our state and federal partners?
Right. So that's what we want to do with this first scoping phase, is to get them at the table and have that very discussion. Because if the, if the feds were, so there's kind of two things with federal money. In general, the first player there is federal highway, and they're going to be the, the, the linchpin on that side of the table and paying attention to the process. Now, federal highway may say, look, it's a local bridge. We don't want anything to do with it. That would be awesome, quite frankly. But what will probably happen is that now the Corps of Engineers will become the higher order federal regulatory agency. And so it still then requires NEPA process and things, but now we've only got the one agency to deal with. And they may have a little different perspective than federal highway, and we can focus and channel on that. If federal highway decides to stay in the game, we've got two federal agencies. They're going to have a little different criteria. We just need to massage that and, and work towards what, what both agencies need to see to be comfortable with, with moving forward there. So that is exactly why the scoping phase is about getting them at the table to have this very discussion of, are you in? Are you out? If you're in, what do you need to know?
Can I ask Ken a quick question?
Mr. Holtie, Dana Sandy speaking. Related to the Maryfield Bridge, you've mentioned that there were studies that were done in the past. I don't have a copy of the, I, I don't know if I've even seen the study that was done related to the Maryfield Bridge. Was the cost benefit ratio for the Maryfield Bridge greater than one? Does anybody know? Was that even calculated? I, I believe it was. Okay. Do you know when that study was done by any chance? Does anybody know? I believe it's 2005. 2005. Very good. And, and you, okay. You, can I ask you a couple more questions? Sure. And maybe, maybe you don't know the answer to these. Maybe the MPO could answer. Who authored the 2045 land use or transportation plan? Well, which, which, was it the Upper Great Plains Transportation Institute that we used to, to build the modeling?
We use them a lot for, a lot for our modeling.
Yeah, but did they build the modeling for the 2045 land use plan? Do they still have the modeling? And are we, are we going to be using them to do the modeling that Mr. Holtie's talking about?
We do have that data as well as we're working on the 2050.
And so they're, they're currently working on the 2050. So can we leverage any of the money that we're spending, that the MPO is spending on the 2050 land use plan for the modeling that we're going to be doing?
I, I guess that would be a question for Ken with SRF. I did a gut check earlier today and reached out to our DOT partners because I knew the question would come up of how much of a lead or involvement the MPO can have, or how much of the study we can take it on and carry it on. And their response was, our funding won't support anything if it goes down the engineering route, or any kind of checklist that indicate that it's going to be anywhere that's going in the engineering. We're really just planning, and that's all they'll fund. So hopefully we can be part of the conversation, but all these, this work program that's talking about, it's nothing that our federal funding can support, unfortunately.
So Mr. Holtie, will you, was your intention, because you've mentioned models multiple times today and traffic models multiple times, and you were saying you were going to be, how much, how much review have you done up to this point? You put, you responded to an RFP indicating that you would do some work. How much work have you, have you done reviewing the transportation models that are already done? The transportation models, very little. We, we are knowledgeable of them, but we certainly have not been in them, so to speak. So it's my understanding that the MPO works with, is it, is it ATAC?
Yes.
That, that hosts your model and does your iterations and testing, right, and your, your 2050. We would look to coordinate with them and have them do most of the modeling. We can do it. It's our understanding that you prefer to have, have them do it. That's just fine. But that will be something to, so the thing we would like to do is sit down and have a discussion with the, the people who have created the model, understand how the, the various links and pieces are built together, again, to make sure they're matching what we, we know that the feds are going to want to see, which is probably there because you're an MPO and they're built out that way anyway.
Can I ask for clarification on something you just asked?
Certainly.
So can the MPO use its planning funds to pay for the NEPA?
No, we can't. Short answer, no, we can't. We, basically for the inner city bridge discussion, we planned it as much, we studied as much as we can. Basically, the next step is going more the engineering route, and we can't take it down that route. The Maryfield has been brought up. It's been a while since we've studied that, so that's a possibility. But the inner city one, we can't. We would like to be part of the conversation, but we can't study it any further. We'd be giving you basically the same information, probably packaged differently, but it'd be the same information that you've seen the last couple studies.
And in NEPA, we're talking about a few million dollars to pay for a NEPA study?
I would ask Ken. Ken, can you comment on the NEPA process? You know, we've always heard the number of $3 million. Can, can you provide us some scope as we go through the, the heavier and more in-depth study? What's that going to cost the community? And are there federal and state partnerships in that funding?
Thanks, Tony. To the latter part, federal and state partnerships, yes. So the funding sources we've talked about, I think we would be able to pursue that, yes. The dollar value of what it would take to get through the NEPA process is highly contingent upon which document we end up doing, which is one of the early decision points we need to do. So if it were to be a, a full-blown EIS, that could be a three to five-year process and could be several million dollars each. That's very studious. That's a real barn burner of a task. I don't see that here. So to do more of an environmental assessment, more of a state-type process, again, assuming the feds can buy into that, you probably could do that in a 12 to 18-month process, just very generically. That could be anywhere from, gosh, I don't know. There's a lot of variables there, but maybe somewhere from three quarters a million to a million and a half, maybe. A lot of that might be contingent upon how much, you know, I'll say handholding we need to do with the feds to keep them on board, how much public outreach we do. That can be a very heavy, heavy lift to make sure we're doing certain things correctly and keeping people apprised. There are some variables there that are, that just become time that can add up pretty quickly, but we'll, you know, that's the goal here is to lay that out and plan that with you so everyone's knowledgeable, and then to pursue the monies to pay for those.
And the MPO can't use its planning funds to do, pay for that, but you're suggesting that the, the feds have lots of available funding for planning. We can get the feds to help us pay for a lot of this.
Right. That's my understanding with our grants team, that, right, the new bucket of money is allowing for the planning, the, the pre, I'll say pre-construction type efforts, the engineering side, which Stephanie just talked about, she cannot address.
When are we anticipating the 2050 land, or transportation plan being completed? January of 24, right?
I feel as soon as I switch seats back with David, I would have another question. We're going for the beginning of 2024 is our goal. So it's another year.
Great. Thank you.
So, so the feds will generally want you to look at a 20-year horizon. And so if you've got a 2045 plan in place now, that more than likely would be acceptable for us to, to get started in use. If this thing really carried on and, you know, another five years and we were still kind of, because of the EIS or something, could we update to the 2050 and make that just so? We could. That's guesswork for the future. If you've got an acceptable 2045, I'm pretty sure that's, and that's what we proposed, is to use that particular model because it's there. Now we can, we don't have to worry about it being finished, so to speak. We can work with the model in play to start testing alternatives and, you know, again, making sure the right buttons and dials are pulled. So the feds are acceptable on that.
Well, since we got Stephanie up here, when was the 2045 completed? I mean, obviously, the traffic model is a big piece of this, and that's probably got the most intricacies to it, and where future growth assumptions are, all those assumptions that have to go into that model. So how old is the 2045 one, and how accurate have some of those growth, some of that growth been since then? And are we confident that's where it's going to at least be close to in the future?
Thinking off the top of my head, it's probably around three to four years ago that we finished that plan and adopted it.
January 1st, 2019.
There you go. We usually do them every five years is our rolling schedule.
I think, if I could make an observation, I think it's very important that we have valid and accurate data because the federal government, we're counting on the federal government to help us with funding the locations, funding the bridges at whatever locations they are. I spent a fair amount of time going back through the, to, to the mayor's point, I spent a fair amount of time going back through how we got to where we are today. And it's a little bit puzzling when you don't look at the big picture. I think part of the reason we're specifically here today is because of the Future Bridge Traffic Impact Study that was done. And Ken Veen, my friend, references this study essentially on a weekly basis, talking about the transportation around the community and what's going to happen if we don't build the bridge. In the executive summary, page ES1 of the Future Bridge Traffic Impact Study, it specifically says, this study and the 2018 Metropolitan Transportation Plan provide a starting point for the traffic impact study. So it's called the 2018 Metropolitan Transportation Plan here, but it's actually the 2045 Transportation Plan. It's misnamed in the Future Bridge Impact Study. So I went back, of course, and I, I looked, but something that I, I think is relevant that was also quoted in the Future Bridge Traffic Impact Study was on page 62, where it talks about level of service and traffic, says the traffic volumes used for the traffic operations analysis are from peak, recent peak hour turning movement counts, which were adjusted to reflect the current 2021 and forecast 2020, 2030 and 2445 volume levels. So the Future Bridge Traffic Impact Study references the 2045 traffic counts that were in the 2045 Transportation Plan. The models that were used by the Upper Great Plains Transportation Institute have been updated multiple times. And interestingly enough, they have the, the Upper Great Plains Institute has the abstracts of the updated plans on their website for public consumption. Not all of them are there, but the
Not all of them are there, but the April 2013 plan that references the, its title is, "The MPO 2010 Regional Travel Model Update." So this is the update to the 2010. I think it's important to reference from this that this model was calibrated to base 2010 conditions with trip rates from the Fargo-Moorhead area used for trip generations. Our transportation plan that we're using to identify future traffic patterns in the city of Grand Forks is based upon a 2010 study and actual previous year's studies between traffic pattern movements between Moorhead and Fargo, not between Grand Forks and East Grand Forks. And I think we can all recognize that 2010 Fargo and Moorhead are much different than 2022 Grand Forks and East Grand Forks. Something else that I thought was relevant, that the Grand Forks, East Grand Forks Travel Model Update, also from the abstract, which was of March of 2017, ATAC completed a major update of the Grand Forks, East Grand Forks MPO Regional Travel Model to account for transportation and socio-economic changes since the previous model. That's the only mention of socio-economic changes being addressed in any of the models since. The last time anyone looked at the socio-economic statuses of our cities was in 2007, unless somebody has other information that's relevant. I think it's important to point out as well that the 2045 Long Range Transportation Plan identifies that East Grand Forks population will grow at 0.9% per year till 2045, which is how we get to the Future Bridge Traffic Impact Study, which shows all of these places where, if, under the do-nothing scenario, where we have these massive transportation increases, increases in cars. Well, the fact of the matter is, East Grand Forks population has increased 1.4% in the last 26 years. Yet the transportation model they're using is saying it's going to increase 1% per year for, for the next 20 years? It's nonsensical. I think, I think that the model that we have and that we're using is flawed. I think it's completely flawed, because it's not taking into consideration what's happened in our communities over the last several years, over the last 15 years. For example, the population of Grand Forks has increased 16% over that, over that same timeframe, when, when East Grand Forks increased 122 people. I think it's also important to note that, for example, North Dakota, the maximum income tax rate in North Dakota is 2.9%. In Minnesota, it's 9.85. Since 2007, when that study was done, Grand, North Dakota's max income tax rate went from 5.54 down to 2.9, whereas East Grand Forks went from 7.85 up to 9.85. Socio-economically, our communities are diverging. The city of Grand Forks and the state of North Dakota is becoming considerably more in fighting for business and for population. And under, I believe, the Walz administration, the state of Minnesota is going the opposite direction. I believe that the transportation models that we're using to identify if we need a bridge, let alone where we should put the bridge, are completely flawed. And if we actually want to do this right, I think we need to go back and look at perhaps the 2050 Transportation Plan and look at the factors that are being used to identify traffic flow, because we need that in order to get to the positive cost-benefit ratio. If we actually want to do it, we better do it right and get to the cost-benefit ratio that'll get us to one. I'm not saying this because I'm trying to torpedo the whole thing. Ken's saying that they're going to have to look at the modeling, well, we had better actually look at the modeling, figure out where we're going, and make sure that we get the location correct. And Mr. Helms and I are on the same page. I will never vote to build a low bridge that goes underwater during the flood. Thank you, everyone.
You know, statistics don't lie, but sometimes we can twist them just a bit. So if you go for a 20-year span and show a smaller growth, of course, we had a massive population loss after our '97 flood, and then, you know, from there to now. But in the last decade, East Grand Forks did grow from around 8,600 to 9,200, about a 7% growth in a decade. So there's your 0.7 annual growth. We're, we're on a pretty good growth curve. Cities nearby actually are more flat or declining into Minnesota, but East Grand Forks does show pretty strong growth, and I, I think will continue to do so.
Well, I mean, tonight, I guess the, how much do we want to get into the, the details and nitty-gritty? How much do we want to look at just this? Because I mean, we can certainly talk on a lot of different subjects on this, and we're going to need to, going into the future. Is our goal tonight to focus on this consulting thing? Are we looking to actually have a decision from the two, the council tonight, or are we just using this as a discussion point? Maybe the two administrators can give us their thoughts on that.
I don't think you can go to action, but I think we really, what we're hoping, hopeful of these two groups, that you would, you would generally concur on an action, that both groups could go back to their respective governing boards and, and finalize the action so that we can move forward. I think that will help also with the two counties, to say that, you know, the cities have concurred with this now, cascading to the counties that we can move forward. That's what we're hoping to get, a general consensus, we can live with this action that we can bring back to the respective boards. Because right now, we're at a little bit of a stalemate.
Well, because right now, I mean, it would be the Grand Forks side, because East Grand Forks has approved it, pretty much as is, and we've, it's been denied once at the Grand Forks City Council, so we're looking to see if there's additional information that'll sway the, the council to change their vote. Is that?
I think so. I, I think something that we could live with as a Grand Forks City Council, and, and even if that really require a modification of what East Grand Forks has approved to date.
David and Stephanie switched seats, so I'd like to make Stephanie come back up. Well, you could just say it from there. Would the methodology for the 2050 study be different than what was used for 2045?
We haven't gone into those details yet, but we're starting to. We're really looking at some of that, that, more of that data as we speak.
But that, that's scheduled to be completed a year from now?
Yes. Yep.
And, and Ken, the, the process that we're looking at, if we wanted to get the feds to pay for as much of the NEPA as possible, what, what's the timeframe for, for applying, investigating that, applying for that, getting that, that funding approved?
That's going to be a little variable, depending on the program that it comes out of, but I guess I would, what we had shown in our schedule was that that would be something we would look to dive into right away, is to identify which programs we could start applying for, and determine when those applications are due, to try and line up as many monies as we can, as soon as we can. It may take some chinkering or stacking a few of these together to cover any one, any one phase, but I think the sooner we start looking, the better. The different pots of money have different requirements. Some will be very, very planning-oriented and very broad. Others are going to require some specifics. And so we need to determine, you know, where's the best bang for the buck there? Where's, where's the effort best applied?
So just throwing out ideas, if, if that process you just described takes three or four months, and then we were to begin a process, you were hoping that we could do a more streamlined process that might take 18 months, then, early on, relatively early on in that process, we would have the 2050 study. So if the study is our whole concern, it sounds like we're going to have an updated study soon enough. There's the possibility to have the feds, the feds pay for this, this important next step, the, the NEPA. And whether the study tells us, or the process, feels like semantics to me, but I'll go along with process, that we, we don't need to have an agreement at this point on where a bridge should go. We would simply need an agreement that we want to pursue a, a, a community bridge and a commerce bridge. And that the NEPA study process would identify, would take into consideration the political factors, the community concerns, traffic studies with an updated 2050 traffic study. It sounds like, and, and this is a unique opportunity for federal funding to pay for this bridge. So I'm having a hard time understanding why we wouldn't want to go ahead and have the feds pay for this study that would help us to identify the, the two bridges that would be most beneficial to our communities for the next century. Why we wouldn't want to go ahead and do that now? Hi Dana.
I'm not saying we shouldn't do that. I'm saying I believe that the studies that they're doing are based upon the transportation plan data model that we currently have. I believe it's flawed.
Right.
We're going to, we're doing the 2050 Transportation Plan, that in theory, they will take a look at the assumptions and hopefully change the assumptions to what people can agree are reasonable.
Right.
And everyone can outvote me, and I can say it's unreasonable, and everyone can say it is, and then I lose. And that's fine. I, I don't have a problem being outvoted. Point is, I believe we need the 2050 plan done first, so that we have the updated model for them to use in order to put this together. Now, I, that's why I was asking about the Merfield Bridge and what study was used on that, and if it had a positive ratio, because perhaps we can push the Merfield Bridge study forward, move that forward, they'll create, for example, some sort of roadmap to get us from here to there, that can then be replicated in the future for an inner-city bridge, once the 2050 Transportation Plan is done. But that's just an idea.
And, and I, I think part of the NEPA study, you, you mentioned a moment ago, you will not vote against any, any wet bridge. But, but I think that, Ken, help me out here, the NEPA study would take into consideration hydraulics and flooding possibilities, forecasts, et cetera. So that would be, that would be one more of the factors. I was in a conversation with the mayor last night, and we were talking about the grade separation at 42nd over in Grand Forks, and someone was asking us, how long does, does it take to do that? And we came up with, I think, 17 years, Todd, is, that from when we first started talking about it, all of the planning and the, the applications and the, et cetera, it takes a long time to do these. So I don't think we're running any risk that we're going to have a bridge shoved down our throats in the next two or three years. This NEPA study, if, if it were to start in the next six, eight months, could easily benefit from the 2050 traffic count. And the sooner we get going on this, the better, especially because there's federal funding right now, not just for the bridge, but, but for this important planning expense, which is, is going to be some millions of dollars.
Is this 2050 study going to, I mean, are we going to be in the same, are we going to be able to manage the assumptions? Can it start from scratch and redo some of the issues that Dana had brought up, so that that everyone can have confidence, so that that doesn't become, you know, an issue? I guess if we go to the 2050 and it's just using the same assumptions and just updating them based on a map that got slightly bigger in a few spots, that's not going to be helpful.
Right. It's going to use more up-to-date information. We'll definitely keep a closer eye on how they're modeling their stuff, and we definitely have representatives from both sides of the river that will be part of those conversations and part of that study, to look at that.
And what would be the cost to kind of start from scratch on that, rather than kind of building upon the model that exists? Is that, I mean, maybe nobody has the answer for that.
Oh, I don't know.
But I think that would eliminate any of the concerns, at least, if you had a fresh look at it completely.
Well, I mean, they kind of, they do, because they're going to use newer data, but probably how they'd use that data is probably going to be similar to what they've done in the past.
Right.
So.
Guess that's what that would fix that.
Yeah.
I just want to inject here, Ken, I see you have your hand raised, was there something you wanted to add into that?
If I may, I think there's a couple of points of clarity I'd like to offer. And I, and I'm sorry, I can't always tell who's talking in the room there, but the question earlier about, you know, pursuing some of the funding, when we could get after that? Looking at a couple of notes here real quick. So last year, when we were submitting our proposal, which I think the original proposal was submitted in July, if I remember right, that was actually the first, somewhere in June, July-ish of last year, '22, was the first cycle of a five-year cycle of some of these planning monies that are available. So I believe, I should go verify this with our grants team, but I think there is a planning fund that has an application deadline, let's just say, summer, this coming year, that we could be pursuing to pay for the, the next phase. This current phase, this scoping phase, I'd like to offer one piece here, too. As some may mention about, you know, trying not to decide which, which, which bridge or which location we want to pursue first here. What we've tried to lay out here really is to cover a couple of things that are being discussed. We would propose to use the existing 24, excuse me, 2045 model to evaluate its, I'll say, completeness, and that's not the, really, the correct word, so Stephanie, please don't take any events there. But it's, you know, looking for it, the things that the feds are going to want to be set up for. And if there are some concerns about, that have been brought up here that we want to dive into, that certainly can be done, Stephanie's team can do it right, fine-tuned. Oftentimes, these models, you don't always start from scratch, they, they build upon, you change the land use, you add new linkages, you build, start from scratches isn't always the, the best way to do that. But by, by using the 2045 model now in this scoping phase, the ultimate best-case scenario we're looking for here is that we're going to be able to define this independent utility of these two locations, the intercity and Merfield, so that quite frankly, those two can be run on independent paths. Now you're looking at two NEPA processes. And so, again, whether one agency over the other wants to take lead on a specific location or bridge, now you can run them as two independent projects, if you can show that independent utility. You can dive into multiple buckets of, of funding, or even the same bucket, although you're going to be competing against one another, for money. It opens up a lot of avenues, but the ability to try to find a way to separate these two locations, the intercity and Merfield location from one another, could be a huge benefit early, rather than carry kind of the whole thing together into NEPA and hoping you're going to get two bridges later, that's, that's a bit of a dangerous proposition, in my opinion.
Just one, one thought that I keep having as, as we go through this, this evening. I think there was some thought among some members of the Grand Forks Council that this really is unnecessary. This really is more work than, than should be done. We should just launch out, pick a site, and start to go. Kind of what you alluded to earlier, Ken. And I think, hopefully, we've all come out of this evening, you know, what I observe about you, Ken, is, number one, your mind is very clear. You're very competent and, and you're an expert at what you're doing. Number two, you seem to be admitting, this is a quagmire. You know, and if in your clear mind, this is a quagmire, it's a quagmire. Right? If you have some of the best minds that, that do this sort of thing all the time, saying, eh, you know what, it's manageable, but it's complex. A lot of moving parts, and a lot of if-then, if-then, you know, a lot of different crossroads that you can't even project five moves ahead until you see how the first two or three happen in the, in those earlier crossroads. So I would hope that if, if nothing else, even as a process of this conversation, anyone who wondered, is it even necessary to continue to study before we start into more of an active of, of construction on the bridges? I hope that question's been resolved. We're a long ways from putting a shovel to soil here on these bridges, and, and this is the kind of study that would be the next thing.
So we're talking about 2045, 2050, but I think we should talk about 2023. Since the Point Bridge is the last southern bridge, it's in my ward. My ward is in desperate need of some relief. I think if you go down Belmont or Reeves in the morning, if you want to go straight across, sometimes it'll take five, seven minutes. It's not safe for kids to cross to go to school. It's just a steady stream, and it's both ways. And so I think we need to think about, right now, it goes right by a school, it's very unsafe, and I think if we just continue to do nothing and bury our head in the sand, it's just, a child's going to die, and then we're going to, we're going to say, oh, we should have done something.
And I hope we're, I'm sorry, I hope we're all really clear that we're going to unload those corridors with a, with a neighborhood connection at either Elks or 32nd. And, and what we see is the added traffic coming into that neighborhood, but that's the part you see. But what you don't see is all the redundant wasted traffic that you're taking out of our two communities. 12,000 miles. our two communities, 12,000 miles a day of extra miles driven through our city streets because we don't have this neighborhood connection. 12,000 miles a day that we can eliminate by building that bridge. So it is, it's important.
I guess to make a point from my perspective, I think, as you alluded, we approved the way it was presented, that we would pay up to half of it with the hope that both counties would chip in, so it would be a fourth. I would hope that Grand Forks would go back and take a look at this and move forward and approve this as pay for, if the counties want to chip in, as Mr. Fiedlin alluded, that they would be great to have their buy-in, even with Polk County also, but I think it'd be great that if we could move forward and start doing these things that we need to do instead of just saying, okay, maybe we'll wait and do it down the road. I think we need to take the initiative to say, okay, we want to make sure that we get the bypass, we want to make sure we get a neighborhood bridge. And I think if we start this process and as Ken alluded, that it'll probably end up being two different projects going at the same time and doing different studies. So I think that's very important that we, you can run independently on the Merrifield and run independently on the neighborhood bridge. So you can, if, let's say that Merrifield is smoother and runs faster and that goes through and gets funded, great, wonderful. I think, but we still need to move forward and keep looking at this. And I think this is our opportunity to show that we are going to take the advice from Ken and his firm and walk us through this process and getting us connected with these agencies and working with them. I think it's a good process and I would hope that we could move forward. So, my two cents.
No, I appreciate that. I think what you're asking for really is just, I mean, we had conversations in the past that they, you know, removing one of these and sure, you know, we're good to go forward. I mean, we'll bring it back. I don't know if any other council members want to make comments, we probably, you know, I don't know if we can make a commitment, the yes or no, I mean, it's going to have to go in front of our council, but.
I have a question.
Please.
What happens if both intercity bridges come back at a negative cost-benefit ratio?
We've arbitrarily chosen, completely arbitrarily chosen 32nd Avenue and Elks Drive versus 17th versus 13th Avenue South. And so we've created a model and then studied traffic patterns based upon where we think we want the bridge versus where we can actually get a positive cost-benefit ratio. What happens if it comes back on 13th Avenue South in Grand Forks is where the cost-benefit ratio is positive? Is the city of East Grand Forks going to support a bridge there?
The factors that go into cost-benefit, of course, include relief of congestion of traffic, right? So tucked into there is, we have achieved traffic objectives. I've always thought 13th is a reasonable place for a neighborhood connection. I really have honestly believed that. I think it would be better to move it a bit more south. And I saw studies early on that studied all the way from 13th to 17th to Elks T to 32nd to 47th. I saw studies early on that showed all of those locations and showed how it would take off the overload on the corridor over the Point Bridge. And the peak of that reduction in the overload and the peak of facilitating smooth traffic flow occurred at Elks and 32nd. They didn't predetermine a location and then show a study to show what they wanted it to say. They went in open-minded to all of those locations. That's how we got here in the first place. It's a product of that study.
We did look at a whole bunch of them, that's correct.
Everyone.
But when we looked at, I don't recall, so I could be wrong, I don't recall seeing a cost-benefit for all of the locations. I recall that we studied all of them, I don't recall seeing a cost-benefit ratio for them. I saw there were dollar values on how much a low, a medium and a high bridge would be. I don't recall, so there was cost-benefit, okay, very good.
And the benefit cost goes down, in other words, it becomes less favorable the less that you accomplish your traffic objective.
Sure, of course.
Yeah.
Yeah, very good. Thank you.
Is there anybody, Mr. Cavami or Mr. Weigl, you guys want to add in the conversation? You guys are online, but wanted to give you a chance.
Before they, before they, I will say though, that those cost-benefit ratios that were calculated when we looked at all of those were based upon the 2045 transportation.
Yep.
Estimates.
Let's get some fresh data.
I think we should, we should get some fresh data and perhaps we should go back and look at all of those. I'm just saying, we need to get, if we're going to try to get to a path, we should, I think we should do it right.
I'd say get the ball rolling now and then fold in new data as it's available. We need to get the ball rolling now. The feds, the money's there and this is really a golden opportunity. Get the ball rolling now and just keep rolling in fresh data as it becomes available.
Yeah, Mr. Weigl, I saw you unmuted, so now you're going to have to say something.
I'll be brief, Mayor. I'm not, again, I think I've said this before, I'd love to find a way forward. I don't know that we find a way forward at this time with an intercity bridge. I think the path forward right now at 100% is the Merrifield Bridge. But I'd also agree with others that new data and being able to look at all other locations, whether that's 47th or 17th, I think that would be something that's positive. But I 100% agree, let's get going on that Merrifield Bridge.
That's a 50% agreement, by the way.
Mr. Cavami?
Yeah, if I could chime in, yeah. So, you know, I think there were some really good points brought up today or tonight about the data and about the source of the data and what we're using and what we're comparing and how relevant and recent it is. So I think that I would agree and echo that, I think that that makes sense to reevaluate, maybe start over, whatever makes sense to get us a little bit more relevant information. But the other piece that I think is most important is just studying that traffic around the point. You know, if this is something that's going to take us years to figure out, you know, the kids that are having to cross the streets there, the school, I would hope that we don't separate these two items or if we do separate them, that we can act quickly and understand, you know, if a bridge is something that's going to take a while, what can we start to do today to affect change for the kids that have to commute to Phoenix and the kids in that neighborhood? So, you know, that's, this isn't a, I don't think, I don't know if this is a joint council discussion, but I do think this is something that we need to push forward. And if this isn't within the scope of SRF, then we need to issue an RFQ and we need to get something going so that we can not tie the two items together and focus on safety just as much as we're focusing on traffic.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. Some of the, probably two of the best speakers we've had come to city council in a long time was two young students at Phoenix that, I don't want that to get lost. Obviously, this is a Grand Forks, you know, majority discussion here, but we need to, regardless, we need to get on that and not have it attached to this, you're certainly right.
Ken, to that point, can you speak to, right now, I think what Mr. Weber wants is that a river crossing in the intercity area. And I know, I think one of his concerns is we've named two locations. He'd prefer to remove the locations and I don't know, within your scope, I mean, you mentioned the federal, you know, overview, will need to make sure, not to limit all the choices before they even get to look at it. To council member President Sandy, will you look at alternatives? Like, you know, in Grand Forks, it's the 13th through, we'll say 47th or 13th through 32nd? And I think one of, some of our members' concerns is that we've locked into two locations. As part of your review, number one, will you look at that whole corridor? And number two, to the school issue, we have a school issue on our side off the Point Bridge. Could we integrate this, it's not only about a bridge crossing or a river crossing, it's also about what can we do in the more immediate term for school safety due to the Point Bridge? Can we incorporate some planning grants as part of this review that will help relieve immediately some of the bridge stress that we're seeing on our side of the river?
So to the second point about safety, safety will also be one of those components that will be part of the evaluation matrix of alternatives. So to your question about, you know, at the intercity location, will we be looking at a range of alternatives, different locations? Yes, we will have to do that. That will come through the next phase or next stage of the project in that Pell and NEPA study. The initial scoping study, which you've got before you tonight here, is to help us to really dive into, can we separate these two locations, the intercity and the Merrifield location, to try and derive independent utilities so they're not being compared against one another, but be individual projects? To your point about getting, planning monies now just to try to implement some immediate resolution to some of these safety issues, I think you're going to want to separate, you can still pursue those monies, I think there's opportunity, again, just different other pots of money and those have grown tremendously with the infrastructure bill. I think you're going to want to separate an immediate need that's something you want to do currently from the bridge study. Now, the bridge study will want to know if there are safety issues out there and if there are pieces that can be built with it to improve safety, that's a positive, that will help any crossing location score better. I don't know that you would be able to acquire some federal, any monies, say build something this summer to benefit one of these schools before the NEPA process is really engaged heavily on the river crossings. That, I don't think is going to work. I think you got to separate those. So if you, if you knew you needed some crossings, you wanted to build some bump outs for pedestrian refuges or put in some signals of that nature, they would probably best apply for as an independent project for an immediate safety need. And then when the river crossing study comes along, they can take advantage of what's already there, so to speak.
And the immediate safety need is probably something that we would do unilaterally. The Grand Forks side would need to do that on our own, I suspect, right?
I suspect, yeah. I maybe have to confer a little bit with our grants team to understand some specifics there because there's just so many programs right now. But that's, that would be my first reaction, yes.
Damon, it scared you, Brett. So Nancy reminded me, we did apply for that Safe Streets For All grant, that's that safety where they're looking at the whole community as a whole, so that would implement some things like that around the school too. But we won't know if we get that money until the beginning, probably another couple more months, but sometime in the beginning of this year. But then we'll start studying stuff, so that's another avenue, if we get it. Fingers crossed.
So we should definitely do that, whether we get that grant or apply for something else. We should, this side of the room, we should do that.
Yeah, or if we don't get a grant, let's just do it.
Good. So that one's decided. That was accomplished. So the NEPA study, why would we not want to move forward with that, especially if it can be separated out between the community bridge and the commerce bridge, the intercity and the Merrifield? If Merrifield is where most likely that would be. Why would we not want to move forward with that now?
I think the NEPA, the actual NEPA document itself is a multimillion-dollar endeavor, so I think.
With the opportunity for the feds to pay for most of that.
Well, certainly if that's, you know, paid for, but if, you know, if you, I think that's the problem we've already, how far are we willing to go down that road without having the decision, you know, amongst the Grand Forks Council out there, willing to continue? Because just to get free money from the feds doesn't mean you should waste it either.
I'm not talking about just wasting money because it might be there, but we've got a genuine need. We can keep arguing about where it should be until all of the federal monies go away again, or we could engage a study that would help us make that decision about where a community bridge should be. And as far as the millions of dollars, we, you know, I've rubber stamped, made motions for some $2 million part at a pump station that I didn't understand. This one, we, we've got the opportunity for the feds, a unique historical opportunity for the feds to pay for most of this and we've got another city that's willing to pay. We hope to get the two counties to pay for this. So we're not talking about the Grand Forks City Council having to pony up a couple million dollars. We're talking about the city's share maybe being tens of thousands of dollars to get really important information for the future of our one-community, two-city situation here.
Right, and I think Mr. Holty's going to say, the scope of this initially is just to get us identifying that utility for both of them, but you got your hand up and we're going to call on you.
Okay, so I love the enthusiasm there. Again, a little bit of caution here, with, there's a lot of rules with the current dollars out there. So the opportunity to go and apply for federal monies to cover the planning, right, the NEPA study, is there right now. My understanding is that depending on which of those funds or grants you get, you need to obtain the money first and then contract to do the work. You can't contract to do the work and then go get money to kind of backfill what you've already paid out. It's a timing thing. So you got to be careful about that because you could end up footing the bill when you thought you were going to get to use the federal dollar. We just want to be cautious about how we're doing that.
We love that. We wouldn't want to commit to doing that activity without the assurance of payment ahead of time. So that's perfect for us.
Yep. Right, that would be our goal, right? To set the dollars up so that they're, right, limit your output, your outcosts as much as possible, absolutely. But we just need to be careful, and again, all these programs, all these grants, little different nuances, and even though you might be awarded, you know, when the dollars become available, there's a timing component there, sometimes, oftentimes there's a delay that, I don't know who controls that quite frankly, but we just need to be cautious about that and plan ahead and be knowledgeable of not putting ourselves in a corner somewhere.
Could I ask Ken one more question? Ken, you mentioned these two bridges, the, we'll call it the neighborhood bridge versus the bypass bridge. You mentioned that they play off one another. So, you know, we're struggling with the, do you, as part of your review, need to be able to evaluate both of the locations to come to some sort of conclusion with this study so that we can move on to the next phase of study? Or can we do it independent?
I believe the first piece, the scoping, again, before you, wants to look at the two bridges, I'll say together, we're not trying to compare them against one another, we're trying to avoid that scenario. We're trying to show that they've each got enough independent utility that they can be pursued as independent projects. So if one goes faster track than the other, it doesn't hurt the other one, it can still pursue money. But if we end up with a scenario, this is why we got to get the feds at the table, because if they're not going to buy into that, that there could potentially be two new bridge crossings here, then we've got a bigger problem in that these two bridges' locations by the intercity or the neighborhood location in Merrifield, they could end up going head to head against one another and you might only end up with one. And that's not the scenario we want to pursue.
Although we've waited 50 years for a bridge. That would have been all bad.
And, you know, I'll say that I listened to a few conversations, I'm sure there are some folks in the room that will settle for one and as long as it's theirs. I get that, I appreciate that.
I really think that the accomplishment of either one of these makes the accomplishment of the second one easier. Because they do accomplish very different things and they both cost money. Right? If I want to take two vacations and I get one out of the way, guess what, in three, two, three years, I can do my other vacation. Right? And so if I have two objectives that accomplish very different things, the accomplishment of either one makes the second one way more likely.
Right, and that's the independent utility I've talked about, right? So if we show that they've got their own purpose individually, that's exactly the scenario you're looking at, yes.
I have a couple of things. First of all, the statement that Mr. Sandy said about the wet bridge is 100% true, just want to let you know that. But Mr. Holty, if, let's just say, let's use the Merrifield Bridge. If we had the okay right now, tonight, to go ahead and pursue that, how many years are we looking down the road before we're actually groundbreaking to do anything? Do you have any idea?
Best case.
Best case scenario?
Three years. Woo, that's quick.
Well, and that's kind of where I was going, I was just wondering if I was going to be around to see a bridge or not, that's where I was kind of going. But the other thing is, but the other thing is, if that's the case, we need to do something before our school districts decide. They want to do something a little bit further out there and screw up everything again, you know what I mean? So we need to decide, we need to get to a point where, and if it's the Merrifield Bridge first, as the mayor said, might make it easier for the next one. But one way or the other, and I think it's been said before, you know, we've been talking about a bridge and Fargo's built 10 of them, so. about a bridge, and Fargo's built 10 of them, so we need to start moving on it somehow, some way.
Two bridges.
Yeah, I don't think you're going to find any disagreement on that. I think if it was simply Maryfield, you'd have seven council members, obviously, it's not in the city limits, but we would, you know, support that in a heartbeat, and want to drive towards that and see where things land, but I know that's a, there's people on council that want to as well, and, you know, I don't think it's going to hurt to gather some more information in this matter, and at least finding utility of both.
And the other thing, as Mr. Sandy said, it's, between him and I, I don't think, it's not the matter of, we would love to see a bridge, it's just, we want to see it. I'd like to see it done right the first time.
I think we can all hopefully agree on that.
But let's, let's really, I mean, to engineering a dry bridge in a neighborhood, the way that a dry bridge is done, of course, the deck of the bridge is above any projected flood scenario, and now you have to come down in a neighborhood. And to get it down into the neighborhood, it has to extend several blocks. And extending several blocks into an existing neighborhood takes out a lot more homes and really, you know, adversely impacts the neighborhood so much, and drives up the cost. So it's an awful thing to drop into a neighborhood, it's so disruptive, and the cost goes crazy, and you're dividing it, so now you have, like, the neighborhood isn't even a neighborhood anymore, right? It's awful. That, I mean, I love the high-dry bridge, believe me, but when they came with that medium option, you know, all we had earlier was low and high, and the cost of this was crazy high, and this was pretty high. Then the medium option came in the discussion at about the same cost as low and way harder to flood. That, to me, became the logical one. Clearly, whatever we do, low is out, and cost and impact to the neighborhood high is out, it's going to have to be medium. And I love high-dry at Maryfield. Just think of it, we'll have Kennedy and Maryfield in peak flood times, and for 99% of the other time, we'll have all these five bridges. It's lovely.
Yeah, thank you. I think one of the problems that we've had here is, when we focus on some of these specific details, specific locations, specific height, we're just adding to the friction between our two cities here, and that's not what we need to do. I do believe the one thing that we all can agree on is that we need federal funds to pay for this bridge. That seems like a no-brainer. Moving forward with this next step here would help to designate formally which bridges would qualify for federal funding. That is a great place for us to, like, step forward together and get rid of some of these other options, these issues that we just can't confirm or deny, that the height, the specific locations, what the MPO has done is almost informal compared to what we want to move forward with. What will the federal government help us pay for? These are the options. Then we can work together and move forward, one bridge, two bridges, a sequence of bridges, whatever that is, I firmly believe will be determined by the priorities set forward by the funding source, which, in our case here, has to be federal government, hopefully DOT as well. So like, this is the way that we, like, get past all this friction between our two communities, work together and kind of reset this. And what a better way to do it than working with our federal government, helping us to determine where these locations are. I understand some of the concern, I expect on the Grand Forks side, is that the federal government may be in favor of funding a location that is politically not feasible, and that's, and I respect that, like, major concern. I would feel the exact same way. But we don't know. We just don't know if they'll help pay for Maryfield, we don't know if they're going to help pay for an inner-city bridge at all, we don't know the priorities. Mr. Sandy brought up a number of concerns with the data in the 2045 land use plan. I would like the MPO to respond to your claims, Mr. Sandy, that, you know, there is errors there. I think that would speak a lot to myself, is, you know, are we building forward on the wrong footprint or not?
So, you know, I, that's my opinion, right? I don't know if there are errors there or not. I believe that it's based upon some flawed assumptions, but I don't know that for a fact.
Right, but when you put it out in a meeting, it seems to, it carries weight. As a councilman, your opinion carries a lot of weight, and so we need to respond to that as well. And we're moving forward with the 2050 data, and finding a location that the federal government can help us fund, that's the key to moving forward, and I believe this plan helps us get there. So, thank you.
Is there any other questions, or any other stuff on the Grand Forks side? Because, I mean, we're the decision-maker, I guess, at least on our side, it's been made on the other side. Anything else you want to hear tonight, or question tonight? I was thinking Mr. Larson, you know, had a good, probably, point to start moving towards ending this, but I wanted to leave it open further, if anyone's got anything further.
I do want to say, again, thank you for the reception that you gave, Mr. Olsted and me, when we came across the river. It was a really good meeting, I felt like you guys, you all, men and women, listened very well and interacted, and then coming out of that to carry over to this meeting, this means a lot. That here we are, gathered yet another time to try to clear the air and find a way forward with all of this, means a lot, and I appreciate it. And hopefully, we've given you the same kind of respectful, warm reception that you gave to us, and glad to be part of that, so thank you.
Sounds good, I'll just echo that, and I'm glad I found out you take two vacations every year. At least two, yeah.
Oh, easy. He must get paid more than you.
Yeah, I guess so. All right, with that, I guess we, I don't know if we need to form a motion, we'll just find a adjourn, as long as you're good with that. All right, thank you, everybody.
Before you guys head out, just a reminder, there is plenty of extra food there yet. I see it's not too picked over, so if you guys can help us out and grab some of that on your way out.
We need to just get ready.